Okay, good evening. Bring this meeting to order. This is a zoning board of appeals meeting, Monday, April 15th, 2019. Will you call the roll?
Rick Pitzel.
Present.
Kathy Stevenson, Elizabeth Kazan, Tessie Buckler, present. Sarah DeGore, present. Steve Katie.
Present.
Mike Wu.
Present.
Craig Masters.
Present.
Niko T. Heria.
Present.
So, the first order of business is to approve the minutes from the March 18th, 2019 meeting, which everybody has a copy of. Anybody have any corrections, changes, questions about the minutes? Okay, that a motion to approve them would be in order?
We have a motion.
Okay.
One second.
Move the mic, seconded by Tessie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Good. Very good. So, the next order of business, approval of a site plan for construction of a proposed commercial building located at 1,001 East War Memorial Drive, Peoria Heights, Illinois, which the property is currently Zon B-2, general business, owned by Gary L. Kemp and trustee of the GLK Land Trust. Is Gary here? Yeah. And everybody has received emails on this and have the site plan here and we have some other pieces of information here. So, Gary, a few or whoever wants to step up to the podium and kind of explain what you're doing and we can ask you some questions if we have any.
Okay. I dropped off a few copies at the office here. I'm not sure if I had enough to pass them around, but I wanted to keep one, so if anybody did have questions, I had it in front of me till I could try and answer. But what we'd like to do is put a 4,500 square foot addition on to the existing building that's there. And we are talking with Subway now and we're entering into a lease with them. And they would have the end cap there on the far end. And everything is basically, you know, gonna stay the same. We're not causing any other water retention or stuff like that because it's all concrete currently. So, we're gonna have everything stay pretty much as is, just putting the building, the addition there. I'm sorry, I'm not usually somebody that can present stuff like this and the general contractor wasn't able to make it, so I'll try and answer the questions the best I can.
So, it's basically gonna look the same as what's there now?
Yes.
Extended, okay.
Yep. The columns gonna be basically the same, the brick.
The materials are all the same, pretty much.
Yep. Yep. And I believe that the side on War Memorial, we're gonna, we're gonna have the columns on the side and we're gonna have the window and then a little drive-through window. And we're trying to debate on whether we're gonna go with the exact side of the current building there now, which is a concrete-type board, is what they call it. Or it might be split-rock block, which they said both of them are kind of similar and attractive and cosmetically only, but that's the only thing that's not 100% decided on.
That's on the end, you're saying?
That would be facing War Memorial.
Yeah. So, in this picture, this is existing.
Yep.
And it goes this way, then the building?
The existing is that way, correct?
This is just a piece of the building?
Correct. It's gonna step out, just looks approximately around six foot from the current.
Okay, so it'll be six foot forward?
I believe so, yes.
So, it looks like where the drive-through is, there's three diagonal parking spaces there, is that?
Yes.
Like, is that, it seems kind of strange next, I guess, well, next to the drive-through window?
Well, what we have is, there is a building, there is a house there when we built the property, or when we purchased the seven or eight properties there. And that property line went all the way out and it was 40-foot wide. And if we do the drive-through and don't do anything there, it's just basically sitting there empty. We just thought picking up three extra parking lots or spaces for the actual complete site would just be so much more beneficial. And we're just gonna designate them as employee parking for Subway.
So, is that the only part that kind of sticks out for the, extends past the existing concrete? Because along Monroe Street, that's all, that's not really changing, right? That parking lot's gonna essentially be the same that it is?
Correct. Exactly the same.
So, the parking spots are the only thing that extend beyond?
Yes.
Do you have any other, I'm just curious if there's any other tenants already? Obviously, it says that Subway is proposed to be there, but are there other tenants that you?
We've talked to a few others. I've reached out to Verizon, I've reached out to United States Cellular. Their wheels don't spin quite as fast as talking to the individual owner himself. Again, they've showed some interest, but it could be a week, it could be six weeks, months, whatever, before I could hear back from them. But yes, we've reached out to them. Just the more cell service, Chicago Hair Cutting, I believe that's the name of the company, they've showed some interest. But yeah, we're getting strong interest.
Okay.
And that's just all from verbal. I mean, once it starts, I think we'll get a lot of people inquiring.
And remind me again, what is the square footage of the current building?
Current building, I believe, is like 5,200 square. I'm doing that off of memory and that's about 16 years ago, so I'm pretty sure it's just a smidgen over 5,000, 5,182 or something like that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I took all the measurements and multiplied them out and I think that's about right.
And in the rear of the building, it doesn't show the existing building. We weren't able to quite get the pitch of the concrete correct, so unless you have a four-wheel drive, you can't park back there. But we're gonna pretty much have, I think, a flat area behind the proposed building. And I think we would be able to probably put maybe two cars parked parallel to the building back there, but that's not shown on the print. We'll have our utility sitting back there also. But the other building has that exact same thing, so I think we can pick up another two parking spots back in the back.
Yeah, so they, for the square footage, if you take the one for 300 square foot for parking, they have 43 parking spots and they would need 33. So, they're 10 over on their normal parking anyhow. So, you probably aren't gonna need, or maybe you'll need, but the stuff behind the building, but it would be extra. And that does, and I didn't count the three employee spots even, so.
Okay.
That's 43 out front.
Your pitch towards the out, correct?
I'm sorry?
The elevation is 16 foot, you go down to 11.9. So, your pitch, the roof pitch is towards the out, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But you got new roof, you got new roof space up there. You say it's not gonna impact the, now, you're putting a new storm sewer in?
I'm sorry?
Are you showing a new storm sewer up there?
The existing storm sewer that we have, we are moving it, but we didn't plan on doing anything other than just moving it to where we're actually going to have the new retention. Because the existing is right at where the handicap is currently, on the very far right corner. And we're just moving that down and then grading everything to be right there and then just using the existing system. Do you see it? I can point it out to you if you, do you see where I'm referring to, where the old one?
The existing one. And the existing one is like right there and we're just taking it, moving it over there.
Is there a handout bill for the, is there more than one?
Uh, no, there's not, sorry.
I did ask in advance and I got a big long thing, but I'm not hearing the same description.
Um, I mean, you're welcome to come up here and look at this, but we don't have one for you.
I'll take it, Kathy Anderson.
So, you're moving the existing to where you're showing the new?
I'm sorry?
So, you're, I'm sorry, you're moving the existing?
Yes.
Right, to where it says new?
And the entire time, the 17 years that we've had the project, I believe it's 17, again, I'm terrible on my dates, but it's around there. In all the severe rains that we've had, we haven't had a stitch-up problem with any type of runoff. It's handled it just perfectly.
Any other questions of Gary, Craig, or?
I never got anything in advance where I can even go look at something, so I don't have a clue what the hell I'm looking at.
What do you mean, you never got anything in advance?
Because I always go get my paperwork two weeks before, where I go down and look at it, talk to neighbors and stuff. I got nothing, you know? Talking.
So, did you come up to get it and she wouldn't give it to you, or what?
It wasn't done yet. So, I'm at a loss.
It wasn't done yet?
Never looked at anything.
What do you mean, it wasn't done yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know what you mean, it wasn't done yet. She sent out an email, so why wouldn't she not be able to print it for you?
Where am I getting an email from?
No, no, no. I said, she sent emails, so why wouldn't she be able to print it for you, is what I'm asking? I don't know.
Okay, because that was probably 10 days ago anyway. You know, you just can't look at it overnight and talk to people about it, to see what neighbors' views might be on something. It's got nothing to do with the project, okay? It's a process that I like to see in order to have time to talk to the neighbors, to look at some of the details and be informed when we're sitting here talking to you. I don't have a clue.
Gotcha.
I'm looking at this sheet here. Frankly, that's worse for me, you know? Because I have no relationship, no bearing to actually ask a halfway intelligent question on it, you know?
And this one's in the back of your packet tonight?
Yeah, I see it.
Well, I don't know. I thought she got everything to everybody. She never told me that people didn't have information and I don't generally call her and ask if she's gotten packets to everybody, so.
I have pictures on my phone, if you want to see pictures.
No, I don't.
Okay, so, any other questions of Mr. Kemp? Sarah?
I'm okay.
Mike?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so, comments from the audience? If we have anybody in the audience that would like to ask questions or speak on this, more than welcome to step up to the podium, you give your name and address. And then we give you five minutes to speak, so if anybody, does anybody in the audience want to talk? So, you can step up, give your name?
It's something?
Sure.
Could I borrow yours? Absolutely. I mean, I'll do it back.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for considering this proposal today. I'm all for Subway.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Certainly. My name is Jeanette Gruber, 3814 North Monroe. I have a business and a home there. And I have several questions. I'm not sure I'll get through them in five minutes, but I'd like to bring up the topics and maybe have Mr. Kemp address them, whatever seems to be the appropriate procedure. I'm noticing that my opinion is there's a big change because there's gonna be a drive-through going through the alley. I don't know that it's a bad change, but I think it's a concern. And that alley is quite narrow. You can't even pass each other hardly in there. And there's garbage too. So, I want to bring that issue up. How wide is the alley and how would the drive-through work?
Well, if you notice on the sheet, so when we started this with Mr. Kemp, I said, if he's gonna do something in the alley, he needs to make sure that when you come out of Subway, you can only turn towards War Memorial. So, if you notice, there's a round curbing.
I see that, yep.
So, it'll keep them from turning left.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be hard. There'll be people that'll run over the curb and turn left, I'm absolutely sure of that, but, but generally, they'll have to turn right and go out onto War Memorial.
I see that. It's still really narrow back there. So, it's a concern for like the garbage going back there and the garbage trucks going back and forth there. Like, are all the garbage trucks gonna have to come up at my end of that same alley and go down, for example? Like, are the garbage trucks gonna be able to go the wrong way up the alley with all the Subway people going to the right? I mean, I don't know the answer.
Well, how does the florist and them get their garbage and the other buildings today get their garbage?
Well, they aren't dealing with a Subway drive-through.
No, but I mean the alley. So, all those, when I drove down the alley, all of the dumpsters are on the alley today for the businesses that are there and for the florist?
It's just really narrow.
I'm just saying, so do they come up the wrong way?
I'm concerned that there's gonna be a lot more traffic.
Do you know how they go today?
I don't know. I only know that I'm concerned if they all, all the garbage trucks have to go in to match the drive-through area. I do have some other concerns to bring up, if you don't mind.
Okay, that's fine. I just wondered if they?
Bring it up.
If they, today, when they picked up garbage, if they came up the alley towards the north or towards the south, if you knew?
I have not been paying attention to that.
Okay.
I know that if there's a lot of traffic going a single way at the other end, the other end by me may have a lot more use and I wanted to be, the village should be considering One of the things that I was observing was that the flat area behind the proposed building, I think, is a really good idea. I think that would widen the alley. Like, in my opinion, if there is a flat area back there, I think that's extraordinarily important and it has to blend with the alley. Like, it has to, I don't know, drain right or match right or link up. So, I just want you to know, I'm supportive of the flat area back there. I know when I got a plan, I couldn't see any flat area back there. I just saw the alley was gonna be the only exit. I would like to consider, or to have the village consider potentially adding another 1,500 square, or 4,500 square feet. I know part of that area isn't rented right now anyway. A little bit of it's vacant.
It's full.
It's full, okay. I've been watching it vacant, so I'm glad you got it full. Do you know who's there?
I'm sorry?
Who's there?
Help against, it's a secondhand store.
Oh, well, I know they're there, but there's a part of it that looks like it's still vacant, like a little bit of a office slot.
There's just two tents. It's Help Against and then there's?
That Creative Images.
Creative.
Okay, and you're saying it fills it?
It's full.
Okay, because it took a while for the, it to fill up again. Okay, so anyway, my opinion is I would rather see two large units than three smaller ones. And if there was any way we could add a little green space, I think it would be an improvement to both the water and the look of the area as opposed to being solely cement. I do recognize that it's grandfathered in because it is cement now. But I would like some consideration to the possibility of even just a row of green in that space would be an improvement and you might be able to do that now. So, I just wanted to bring up that possibility. I'm aware it's not essential, but I think it would improve the look of the village. And I think Subway's a good group and I hope that that will work out. I'm not sure where my five minutes are. Is anybody paying attention?
No, I didn't time you.
Sorry.
I usually time people, but I didn't time you.
Well, I was gonna say, I just wanted to be respectful that you had asked me the extra questions. That's where I'm at for the moment. I just would like to see a little, a little green space in there, improve the neighborhood. I know I took out sidewalk and put down green, so.
So, when you, when you say green space, do you mean where the concrete is, where the concrete is or is going to be, or out along the road? I mean, there's a green space around the road. Would you like trees there? I mean, what's, what's your idea of green space?
My thought was that instead of 4,500 more feet of interior building, some aspect somewhere would become green space. It, it's gonna be 4,500 square feet over cement. It's currently cement.
Mm-hmm.
All of it, just flat, all cement. And I'd really like to see, I don't know if you can do a little garden area or even where the people eat outside, or just, it could even be where you're putting the building, but do a little bit of green space in there. I'm thinking 500 square feet and you have two, 2,000 square foot pieces and 500 square feet of green. I'm not sure, like, I'm not an expert at this, but I know if you get a good landscaper in there, there would be a way to add some green space. And I think that would, that would be a better blend with how you guys do it up at this end of the town. And I'm very supportive of a little bit of landscaping, if we could do that. I know I took out sidewalk at our property and put in a, it's just a strip of green, but it's better. And that was an architect who told me what to do, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeanette, can you remind me your house number?
3814 North Monroe.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Barlow.
So, does anybody else have any comments from the audience?
Hi.
Hello.
I am Lisa Trimble. I live at 3808 North Monroe, so the alley would go behind the house that I rent. I have a background, I guess, if you'd explain, in urban planning and have practiced, I don't know.
Can you talk into the microphone, I'm sorry?
Let me, for short people. I have a background in urban planning, just so that it doesn't come off as being out of place. I guess, one of the concerns I had when I looked at the site plan, well, there were several things. I called the village and asked for more information and no one returned my call, so I felt kind of like, well, it's not really a public participation process if, you know, you have to be aggressive about getting the information. So, I came in and I did request a site plan and I did get a copy and everyone was nice and explained everything, but I didn't really consider that very accessible. If I call, I guess I would have liked to have had that call returned. Also, in looking at the site plan, I wondered, I mean, coming off the alley, it's really giving the landowner a de facto exit onto War Memorial Drive, which would, what, be under the control of IDOT? And I wondered if anybody had talked to the district office or, you know, how that was gonna be coordinated when there was more of a plan? I mean, he's already in close proximity to a controlled intersection. And I wondered if IDOT had been consulted as to their opinion and if the landowner had presented a traffic study with the number of cars he planned to generate and how much of an upgrade and the expense that alley would be in terms of, obviously, it wasn't designed to handle the traffic of a drive-through business the way it is now. And I think when Jeanette was making her comment, you're going to prevent, you know, people from turning left and routing traffic down the alley, but the same thing that you're putting there to keep the traffic from turning left, how is it not gonna make it harder for a garbage truck, for instance, to go up and down? Is it gonna be blocked by that same thing that's keeping traffic from turning left there? And then I also wondered about?
Well, I mean, it's not gonna be in the alley. The curbing is on his property, so they can come up and down the alley.
Oh.
In fact, that alley is one, when I drove off of War Memorial onto that alley, it may be the widest alley in Peoria Heights, if you ask my opinion. It's, it's like double-wide.
But still, it'll be about 12 feet. I mean, it might be a double-wide alley, but it's not a single lane of traffic.
Well, I'm saying behind the florist, it's, it's almost double-wide behind the florist. If you, if you drive down, and then when you get up behind your house, I agree, it's narrow up there. It's a normal alley. Once it gets past his building, it becomes a normal alley.
Was it double-wide because you're on Greg Flores' property or you're on his property? Like, do you know where the alley begins and ends, where the village's responsibility is versus where the landowner is? I don't know.
Yeah, and I believe?
What we've seen.
Well, and then those cans are sitting in, on, on his property and they're sitting on the florist's property. But in between, there's, it's wide right there.
So, are you?
But regardless, the, the turning is gonna be on his property, so it's not gonna impede people from driving up and down the alley.
No, it won't impede them from driving into the alley and turning left either, I don't think, if it's on his property, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, and what did you just say? It wouldn't?
Well, okay.
If you look at the site plan, if you want to come up and look at this. This is the turning, this is the alley. This is?
So, no, but it's still not gonna prevent me from pulling into the alley and turning left. It's going to dissuade me, but it's not gonna keep you?
That's exactly what I told the First Lady.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's anything that's going to be able to completely prevent you from turning left, but like other alleys of this type, it is going to dissuade you. And if you want to drive up over a curb, I'm sure you can probably?
Well, you don't have to drive up over the curb, you're just gonna drive into the alley and turn.
Is there, is there a way the Heights could just, could designate that as coming out of there as right turn only? I mean, I know people can still decide not to do that, but I don't know, I don't know if the Heights has that authority if it's going on to War Memorial.
Yeah, I mean, well, they could put a sign, "Coming out of his turn," that says, "Right turn only."
Right, and there's, we could specify that they need to do that, but, did you, Mr. Kemp, did you talk to IDOT at all regarding?
I am not.
Okay.
I told them IDOT doesn't have any, it was basically the building shut.
Okay, since you are, since there's already, the alley's already there, it's already exiting.
I think, just for safety's sake, you would want to have an engineer look at it. You have a line of sight problem with the existing building. You're already coming into a controlled intersection. You're going to be asking people to come acco, and are you driving out? That's gonna be the out?
Correct.
Okay.
Exit only.
So, you're gonna have people wanting to be into the left turn lane as well as pulling into the left turn lane? You're introducing quite a lot of activity near a, already a signalized intersection on a, on a busy section of road.
Well, we already do.
I mean, it?
Exactly, that's exactly, you go down the alley, you got that wall there and it's right next to a major intersection.
Yeah, when you go up and down, you look up there, the one-way sign there, so you can't turn and go up the alley. You got the exit of War Memorial. And I tell you, it has worked great. I would just, we're worried to use it rather than dump it onto prospect.
Same thing as Starbucks, yeah.
Starbucks has it, McDonald's has it, and that one I bet.
So, I don't see where that's a concern because there hasn't been any problem with it. I would much rather them use that, you know?
Than turn back up the alley?
Yes.
But, yeah, we don't want them to turn back up the alley.
That was always the problem, but?
Yeah.
Make the alley one-way, just like to another's or, and avoid the problem. Garage truck have problems, any?
Well, I think they already go?
He has to come through.
Go toward War Memorial.
Of course, that's what I would assume.
I think, that's my memory.
I would assume that they, they come down the alley from Division?
Division. Yeah. It does sound that they are increasing the amount of impervious space by introducing the three additional parking spots. I didn't think of them as being employee parking. I was more concerned about queuing, where you were gonna handle, already in that tight lot, where you were gonna handle the queue if you had a lot of people at your drive-through. I assumed that perhaps, say, I came in and ordered enough for an office party or something, that that car might park in the newly, new spot, well, waiting for them to bring their stuff out. But it did seem that that would introduce, you know, more impervious surface to an area that's already significantly, you know, concrete. And I guess, you know, we're all becoming more aware of the stormwater situation in Peoria. That's about it. I mean, I would, you know, circulation in that would be a concern. I think you are introducing quite a bit of activity to that area. And the florist's building is, is interesting. I mean, it's definitely blocks the line of sight, so.
Lisa, I didn't hear what your last name was, could you repeat that?
Trimble, T-R-I-M-B-L-E.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. So, it is, I wonder if this, I have another question for you, Gary, if you could come up here. On this.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's bigger.
Yeah.
So, is this-
Yes, our lot line.
Trying to figure out, that's your lot line.
Uh huh. And it goes straight back here. We bought seven or eight houses. And this lot line, actually, the house used to sit here with the driveway this way. So, that's why the lot was actually this way, and the rest were all like this when we bought it.
So, is, uh-
I believe it's forty foot.
No, I mean, this, this area from there to-
That, I believe, is gonna be where your sidewalk is. You've got a sidewalk on War Memorial.
Okay, fun. Look at, look at this, this.
Yeah. I believe that it's gonna be, um-
So, you are going into this green space with those three?
Those three spots, right. Just to pick up the extra three. Cause we feel that if we have like a hair salon, or, um, Verizon that has six or seven employees, and then they're all gonna have a customer, we're gonna have an overflow on parking. So, we just thought, instead of just having that out there and paying the real estate taxes on it and not utilizing it, we could pick up even more spots.
I mean, would you ever consider waiting to do those? I mean, because other, I feel like we have a lot of strip malls that probably have more parking than has ever used at them. And I mean, I do think it, one, visually, it's gonna look odd that it's sticking out like that. I also, you know, to the point of green space, I mean, that would be, I don't, I don't know, again-
So, we're talking about the three parking spots on the end.
If that green space there on your property, I mean, you could put trees or something there to kind of soften the building, make it more attractive. I mean, picking up the, I feel like those, I don't know, I feel like those are, that could be something you could wait to do and find out if you really needed that space.
Unfortunately, uh, I've owned property on War Memorial for twenty-nine years, and alls I've done is struggled for parking spots. Uh, Paton Street Building was built twenty-nine years ago.
Well, I mean, I'm driving by this right now, and there's, there's no, no beads ever in that parking lot. I drive down Monroe all the time.
How often you drive, or when you drive, but on Friday or Saturday, helping hands, you can't find a spot. Uh, and they are, they're very concerned when we do start the, uh, construction, that they're not gonna have enough parking. And I said, well, we'll make it work. But, no, we're desperate for parking. So, those three are pretty much something that I-
Well, I mean, also, one of the things we're trying to get against is trying to make parking for your highest, like enough parking for like your highest, highest usage of parking. Otherwise, if we did that, the village would be full of parking lots. I mean, so one thing we wanna do is kind of manage that, that we don't have parking that can, like, for the, your very, very top busiest thing, have enough parking for that. Sometimes, there might be, there's parking on the street, I believe, as well.
Right.
So, that could be utilized as well.
Uh, the parking on the street on War, or Monroe, I'm not sure that you wanna do that. I mean, with Peoria Christian School across the street, they're very active.
But I'm saying if it's in the evenings, they're not gonna be there probably in most evenings.
You know, when they do their concerts or any type of their, you know, sporting-
Well, there's always gonna be an-
Right.
An exception to the rule. I'm just saying that we don't necessarily wanna build parking up to, like, you know, Black Friday shopping. Otherwise, we're just full of parking. So, the suggestion is that it's only three spots. I think it's gonna be confusing anyways with your drive-through. I would rather not see the spots there and actually see some utilization of that green space, rather than cutting into your green space somewhere in here. Use what you have right now.
Right. No, I, I understand, and I'm not trying to argue. I'm just trying to say that with, with what our current parking is with just these two tenants, and we're bringing on three more, we are going to need every, that's why I talked about having five of the three back here yet that we can't even pick up. So, that's gonna be a total of, you know, I think you said forty-three, and you didn't count the, the three there.
Yep.
So, that's forty-six, forty-seven. And I feel with, with what we're talking about with these two other spaces, we need, we need those three. I mean, I own a building here on Prospect. We're desperate for parking. Alls I get from my tenants is we need more parking, we need more parking. I mean, twenty-nine years I've been a landlord. Alls I hear from my tenants on War Memorial Drive, at the Paton Street Building, we need more parking, we need more parking for a landlord. So, I'm trying to utilize the property that we have.
Right. Right. No, I hear the parking thing too. It's just funny. I lived in the Heights my whole life, and I never had problems finding parking. So, I think that there's a little bit of a perception versus reality issue there, so.
Gotcha. I can only say what my tenants say.
Mm-hmm. I get that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Uh, no, that's-
Is the, on the north end of the building, the wall and privacy fence staying there?
Yes, yes, sir. Absolutely. We just, we put it up about three years ago, and it was kinda a little wobbly, and we just hired somebody to come back and shore it all up.
Right. And, and, I'm talking to the neighbor right there. Uh, just north of, you put fence up, we went through that, uh, and, really, and so you'll have to look at the car to kind of go like, and, and the way, so, that's good.
Right. And we didn't, I mean, that was a pretty expensive fence, but we could've picked it up, so.
That was.
Anything else?
I don't get that.
No, I don't either.
Okay, uh, we have more comments from now on, sorry.
My name is Dan Callahan, and I'm the owner of Greg Florist at ten fifteen East War Memorial. And, um, we've been there, this is B R, this has started our forty-first year of owning the, the property there. So, we have a vested interest in keeping it beautiful and functional. And I appreciate Gary's effort to, um, get a little bit more going on the property. And we always expected that something would happen. But what I'm hoping for, if there can be some amenities and not try to squeeze too much into the site, we have been there, um, we've seen a lot of things happen. And like Tessie was talking about, the traffic ebbs and flows. But introducing, um, a, um, drive-up restaurant does add, uh, a lot more, um, another element that we haven't seen there. So, I appreciate our neighbors' interest in what could happen with just overall traffic in the neighborhood. And, um, we do own the part of the, the paved part of, which is why that alley is so wide there. And it's been very helpful when it comes to the, the, in the flow of neighbor traffic. Uh, you know, if we have a truck that is parked out there on the concrete portion of the alley, the neighbors can get around us. Um, that's a good thing. I, I did have some concerns about where the, um, trucks that are coming to serve the subway, um, if they're, because that, they're, you know, get pretty regular service, cause they do fresh food, so. Uh, one day a week? Okay. Okay. All right. Is it a semi or something like that?
It is, and, um, we can dictate that, so.
Okay.
Without seeing the building up and being able to be visual, we might have to have them stay on, on the side street, and we would, we can dictate that.
Oh, gosh. Um, okay. Um, one of my concerns was the condition of the alley. And, uh, we have, we've mentioned that, um, to, um, to the Heights, and they've come down and take a look at it. But, I mean, it's already pretty stressed out as it is right now. So, that's one thing that kinda is a parallel issue, that I think that the village might have to look into if there's all this, um, ex egress of people through the, uh, from the drive-through. The other thing that I'm, I had a question, Gary, what happens to the, the, um, grass circle in the center?
That disappears, and we have another one. It just moves a bit to the, to the right.
Is it gonna be the same size, more or less?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, okay. Cause that would be something, that would be another one of those things that could, um, help with, uh, stormwater. But, the, the biggest issue that I have with this, in addition to the size of it, and the fact that it's filling in, um, so much of the footprint, are those three parking spaces for the employee parking. That's taking up green area, softening. I mean, we may not have the potential to do it now, but to leave the opportunity out there for some kind of landscaping or softening. I mean, the village has greened up a lot. And part of what we're proud of, of being part of this community, is we put more attention into the visuals than the, the average commercial endeavors. And that would be a perfect spot for it, cause it just needs it. It's so nice now to have a little open space, and then someday to have trees or something on it. I think that would be the more forward-looking, uh, way to approach it. Um, the other thing, um, that I was concerned is about the drainage. Um, contrary to what Gary said, there, you did have some trouble with drainage on the other building. You had to run those pipes at the back for the, the, the-
We corrected that in the first eight months.
Uh, and I, I get that, but it's just an issue that is something to think about sometimes in advance. And since this building is gonna slope, uh, with the slope of the roof towards the alley, um, i- is it just gonna go right onto the alley?
No, it'll go to gutter, and then down the, into the sewer system. We're gonna pick up all the others.
Okay, all right. That, that-
Into the retention system. Into the retention system.
Yes.
Okay, all right. That is, the other, the other problem with the, so much of the lot being built up on is about the, uh, snow removal. Cause it is hard to find a place to put snow. Cause you can't, we do, we do. I mean, it's something that, in any, any place where you have a lot of activity and a lot of parking in one area, and trying to think of where it's gonna go, because we can't push it down to War Memorial, you know, unfortunately. So, this is something we're gonna have to be very tuned into, because we had, there was more, um, more space available before. If they're constantly gonna be using every part of the edge of the alley, that could really present a big problem. So, um, in summary, um, I welcome Gary's initiative, but I really hope we can save some open space there. I think it'll be useful, uh, for the long haul, for the village, and for the people driving by. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, I have another question for you then, for, from his discussion. So, you said that there is, so there's a circle there now with some dirt in it. And it's gonna remain there, or there's gonna be a different one? I don't see that on the site plan.
This is basically just gonna be sloped, just like the, it's circle that's currently there. It's just gonna slope in the parking lot.
Oh, we, we were thinking, you meant that, like-
Oh, no.
That's gonna be gone?
That's gonna be gone.
Okay.
Right. But this is gonna slope. I-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand that that's gonna slope into the retention right there. But you're not going to have-
Correct.
A green space in the parking, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
If I'm seeing this correctly, so like, when we're talking about these three parking spots, we have War Memorial here.
Yep.
So, then these cars would just be facing War Memorial, and then the drive-through would just be coming out this way.
Yep, correct.
And we will be losing the grass and green spaces there for-
Well, if you look at the, at the map.
Those three, that right there.
There's that much green space. So, he's talking about putting his parking in right here.
I get it. And then there would be like a curb between that last spot and the alley?
Yes. This spot here?
Yeah, so that last spot in the alley, there would be a curb.
Yeah, so they come out right here, right? And that, that curb is there. That's, that curb.
Yeah, but that, but it, on that curb, it would be a built-up curb?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Is it okay if I come up to where?
Yeah, you bet.
I'd like to see too.
So, this is-
We've been trying to stop it.
So, it's, it's still, it's very small, so, and that's-
Do you have a question, or like, you mentioned on-
This, this is his lot line.
How important?
So, yeah.
It's a free space, so now.
So, that's a little bit of green.
I feel like that is gonna cause issues like Maxx, like people going out of the drive-through.
Well, that's online, it's public. If you, there's a website if you wanna get on line and look at it.
I'd like to go to one of the, the-
Well, I mean, I guess, Sarah and I were just discussing, I just, so I guess, I, I'm fine with the site plan. I, but I don't, I would like to approve it without those three parking spots for a couple of reasons. One, I don't like the green space. They're fully in compliance, more than they need with the parking. And I do think that it's important that we have some green space. I mean, I would like to even see trees there. I don't know if that's because of War Memorial. I know IDOT has very different rules. But I do think it's also, I also just think it's not a great space as far as the drive-through. I mean, I know you have a twelve-foot lane there, but I still feel like it's, um, visually, I don't think it's gonna look good. I think we're losing green space. I think it's gonna be confusing. Um, it's just restricting your drive-through access. So, I guess, I don't know how everyone else feels. I would prefer to approve it without those parking spots. I'm okay with the rest of it.
The only thing, Roger and I are on the planning commission, how many times we got promised something green somewhere, Roger, and we came up short.
We still haven't seen something green, that there must be soil was routing.
Correct, correct.
You mean in terms of requiring landscaping?
It's those growth, four-foot-a-year trees.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, I would be, but I mean, at least then, at least a, though later, if there's landscape, there's not parking spots there, if we don't put the parking spots there.
Cause there's green there today.
There is green, there is grass there today. Yes.
I understand that, but, uh, I might send it, there we go.
I know, but we should probably try to change-
What'd you say, Mike? I didn't hear that.
That's, that's his line.
Yes.
In the past, when they were in the planning commission, if people were saying they were going to plant things, it never happened.
Yeah. He asked him to put them down the alley. He mentioned they're gonna go into the water retention area.
We're, we're picking that up.
Correct.
It's, it's gonna, down the others, down the green spot, and, uh-
There is some in the corner.
You're gonna do a circle?
Yes.
Oh.
From the back of the alley all the way around.
There's not much along Monroe. It's only, it's really tight.
I'd be concerned too with water.
So, it goes, this is all-
And it, to make sense, if you're gonna-
It's a long version.
Or something, all around there.
Yeah, it's just grass, right? So, this is what he's been picking up. This is what Tessie said, he took those out, and still, no, no. I mean, we used to get into the, the landscaping or strip grass, and it's, uh, hard to really- So, is there any other discussion or questions of any?
We can try and get some.
Uh, I did have a question for, oh, uh, so, you're the owner of Subway, is that correct? Um, so, how many, how much of your business currently, where you currently are, is drive-through versus walk-in?
I'm not gonna educate, yes, cause there's really hard to determine the exact number. But it's probably thirty, thirty-five percent. It's not a big number.
Right. The drive-through portion is thirty-five percent, yeah. I would've guessed, I would've guessed somewhere around twenty-five, because it, it just seems like it's a hard food to order.
For us.
Yeah, cut off the toppings, right.
I love the word, have the issue with those without, because I know, we just don't.
How many parking spots are in your current lot?
We gotta go to how, I, I couldn't say, but there's gonna be more in the new, this-
Only like four? Not, there's not that many, like-
No, and it's, uh, I don't know, I remember when it was original, but, you know, that old house that was there, right?
Yeah.
Nine, nine, eleven.
Well, ten.
So, that is, uh, it's difficult, the parking lot is, I've had to deal with. We have thirteen stores down there. I've been doing so with it for about twenty-five years, and a lot in Springfield, there are a lot of stores. That's one of the most difficult parking lots that I've ever had to deal with.
Well, it's a lot tighter than this. The sp- you don't have as much space in between spaces.
So, how, like, based, since more of your business parks thing comes in, how many parking spots at your busiest time do you think that you need?
Well-
And where are your employees currently parking?
Well, they, I mean, right now, we try getting the parking, the backside of that parking lot, because it's on the other side of the drive-through.
Okay. You're back by the dumpsters?
Yeah.
Okay.
The drive-through will cut off the full traffic, that parking lot, if it gets backed up.
Okay.
I mean, in, Gary's defense on those parking lots in the front, that was one of the-
It's two thousand and eleven.
It doesn't make that way, cause they're not gonna come in and out every month.
Okay.
You think they get-
I just mean that there's gonna be a line there. So, we keep customers parking open, um, for customers that are coming into the rush. Um, so that is kinda, otherwise, they're gonna, where they're gonna park, they're gonna park out in respect of customers' spots, or other businesses, they're gonna park in front of somebody else's business or whatever. And, and so that's why those were set up the way they were, as a, you know, not really convenient, but just trying to be smart about how we park.
Yeah.
So, you still, you have parking behind your building?
Right where it stands now?
Yep.
Yes, right along that back fence. Right along that back entrance for a trucker?
Yep.
I, I asked you two que, too many questions at the same time. So how many parking spots do you think you need at your busiest time?
Well, I wish I could give you a really great answer. We're gonna serve, on average, at the, I'll give you the numbers off of the store where it sits right now, so it's as close as I'm gonna get to being a, a good guess. We're gonna run through probably 170 to 200 transactions in a day. Each transaction's a different customer, whether that be a drive-through or a walk-in customer.
Okay.
If you take 30 percent off of that number as a drive-through customer, and the rest of those customers are gonna be walk-in customers, whether they come together or separately in a car, that's kind of a guess. So let's just throw out 200 as, as a day, so we're gonna take 60 of those cars as a drive-through, 140 customers walking in, and how do those people come in, whether they come in groups of two, three, four, or individual?
They, we have parking on the street on the row though, right?
Can I get your question over there, Ford?
Thank you.
You have 25 spaces currently.
And, and I'm gonna just throw off one of them, just because I like to be optimistic, but I really hope that place is busier than this place. So, and in my business, I mean, we've been doing this a long time, and you know how business is, it's up and down, you know, really what's gonna happen, kind of plan for the future. So we have to make this be what we think it's gonna be for the next 15 or 20 years, not just for today. So whatever, whatever that is, what it is. You know how that goes. And I, and I respect them, I mean, I, I don't know if you guys know me very well, and probably not, but I just live down the street. I'm here, I do business here all the time, I'm here at the weekend, my wife's meeting me for dinner, she comes, I leave here at hours. I shop where you go, and so I'm not trying to be intrusive, we're just trying to make something work, we're in a tough situation here. I would create me a, have been for, I've only been there 20, 30 years.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think that the addition to this, I mean, I remember, I was on the board when this first came through. I think actually having a more complete building actually visually is going to look better than it was, so I'm, I'm glad that, because right now, it just looks really odd with that large, I know you had like a drive-through coffee place or something. So I, I'm not, I'm, don't mean to sound like I'm negative, because I'm not being negative.
You guys are, I'm just trying to put out there, I've never talked to anybody here, nobody really, I'm pretty low-key, nobody really knows me very well. Actually, I just wanna make sure we all know, I'll be, I'm very transparent, I, you know, I'm active here too.
Right. Yeah, but one of the things we're, I mean, at least it's important to me, is to try and increase the green space, and especially like a, along Moore Memorial where it's very commercial, try to find ways where we can beautify, because there's a, I think, a lot of beautification that needs to take place, you know? And there's ways to do that. There's ways to have parking, parking lots, but soften, you know, soften the hardscape, and it's not very hard to do. And so, I guess that, I mean, I'm trying to balance, you know, I think there's two things. I would love to see a sign, whether, whether, I don't know if the Heights can do a sign asking, you know, or requiring people to go one way. Once again, people can always go the other way, but I do think it's smart, whether it's you putting it up or the Heights putting it up, that when people exit that drive-through, telling them that there's only one way.
Thought crossed my mind when you were speaking that.
Yes.
It's a must, I think.
I think that's a no-brainer. I think everybody would be happy with that. And then, I think maybe, well, this Starbucks doesn't let you go the other way. I think that is...
They're taking that out.
Oh, they have taken that out? Okay. Well, maybe it doesn't do anything, but at least we could try. I just feel like, I guess, a good compromise is to not have those three spots and to have that green space to alleviate some of the neighbors' issues. I think it would be better, I would love to see large trees on that to soften it, make it a little bit more inviting. So I'm just saying, I feel like that's a good way to compromise between what you're trying to achieve, what maybe some neighbors' concerns are, and to make everybody kinda happy. I'm happy that this is happening, because I do think overall, and I hope that you're very successful. I mean, that's good for everybody in the Heights to have that tax money coming in, so...
Okay, any other questions? If anyone? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you can just talk from next...
I can stop, okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate being you. Did you say your name and address? I'm sorry, I wasn't saying...
My name is Dave Hannah. I live at 2109 West Orlando Drive in Georgia.
Wonderful. Welcome. I'm so glad you're here. So you're moving the Subway over there, then?
We, we hope so, yes.
Okay. Great. Well, I, I'm all for Subway. So, I guess my opinion is, if we are crippling them by leaving the three spaces out, my opinion is that three more units on that building is too many. Two units would work, or maybe 4,000 square feet instead of 4,500. So I just, I just wanna say, hearing the narrowness of how generous the parking's gonna be with 200 customers a day, and hopefully 250, or whatever, 260 maybe? I don't know, that'd be a 30 percent...
You just keep talking, I'll let you go.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that it will have more customers, and I like the concept of it's a, it's a nice tax base. I happen to be a CPA, but that's not the only thing I think about. I, I want the community to be lovely, and that's why we moved here. And so, it seems to me that that's the issue, is that it's a little bit too many additional spaces. And the other thing to, I don't know, that seems evident, that isn't a required consideration at all, is just that I don't have the impression that the Helping Hands is the highest and best use of that space. I love that group, I very support them, but I don't know if maybe that would be where one of the variances would go. Like, it's not that I don't want a Verizon store down there, or Sprint, or whoever you're looking for. I just think maybe we can do a little more, and if we're that narrow on the parking, that they care about the three spaces, of course, everybody cares about the space, but it feels real narrow too. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Gary?
Greg, I'd like to ask you, how many of your customers park in our parking spots as we speak?
Usually, like, one or two an hour.
One or two an hour. My general contractor that's been working with me, he's been up there numerous times, he says, "Do you know how many customers of Greg's parks here in this parking lot?" I said, "Yeah, I kinda do." And then I go into Helping Hands, they say...
Those three spaces are very important to him, and then the financial budget of this, that may not allow this project to go through, if you eliminate those three spaces, or am I misunderstanding this correctly?
Well, that's definitely what he said. I guess I'm not thinking that these three spaces are critical to the, I think aesthetically, we need to start considering what, you know, Moore Memorial looks like, trying to make it more visually pleasing, so that it is more successful for, for businesses that are there. So I don't feel that, I, I'm saying, I mean, you guys can vote against the motion that I made.
I'm just trying to understand how, if that helps against it, that's, makes it go back to plan, to change it, I understand, but isn't there some way, can we add some sort of a variance, and that they will provide this much green space? Well, there should be a green space, there should be a landscaping provision in all of the city.
Well, honestly, I, that's something that we, I think, need to do very much, is zoning, a lot of zoning codes actually have a very specific landscaping they require, like, you know, like landscaped islands in the middle of the parking, like every, so many spaces, there's an island that has landscaping. We don't have that, and I do think that that's something we need.
But is it, should be one-size-fits-all, because all these applications, and we do a change on it all, different, I mean, you should have some criteria.
Well, that, that's what the zoning, that's what the landscape, a zoning for the, that's what, there's a lot of communities that already have that.
I've been doing some serious stuff, and some of it's just completely ridiculous, because redoing gas stations and watching what they make me do around the dumpsters and everything else, you know, it's granted, it's great to have landscaping, I want the place, what it works, what stays there, so if you put it in tomorrow, and it looks all green and everything else, well, that landscape is gone, because it wasn't taken care of, littered, or not properly watered, what good does that do? I mean, we all need pride in the way these things look, and we want that to look better.
Well, I agree...
Wouldn't you build that into the code?
Right. And I totally agree. A lot of people put in the wrong landscaping. I mean, there's no purpose in putting inside, and, of course, but, but there's other things to do. There's other more appropriate landscaping, ground cover, there's trees that don't do well on a city street because of salt and things like that, like boxwoods always die because of the salt. I mean, there are appropriate landscaping to put in those areas. I'm just...
Isn't that part of the, because the way that, you have all this specific stuff, all these, you have a tree, you have a plant, you have this much green space, and a lot of people can't afford to do that, or it's not in their budget when they get to this point, so they do it the way they can, and then the green doesn't last.
Well, I know, but we're talking about a code that we don't have right now, so it, I don't feel like it's really applicable right now.
Wouldn't it be easier to say, let's put some sort of a thought in this, so that as we're going forward, that we have something that we can say, so the developers all know that something's gotta be in it?
I'm, yes, I think we should. I totally agree with that.
But I hate to knock past this, with the point, we gotta, those that you have all this specific stuff, all these, you have a tree, you have a plant, you have this much green space, and a lot of people can't afford to do that, or it's not in their budget to get to this point, so they do it the way they can, and then the green doesn't last.
I know, but we're talking about the code that we don't may have right now, so...
Wouldn't it be easier to say, let's put some sort of a thought in this, so that as we're going forward, that we have something that we can say, so the developers all know that something's gotta be in it?
I, I thought we're getting on the landscaping, it's already great enough.
But I hate to knock past this, with the point, we gotta, this particular spot, I think it should be...
So procedurally, what, what should happen? Those who believe the site plan as presented should not be approved, because those three extra spaces, if you would vote for it, that's Tessie's motion. You would vote for it without those three spaces, you're gonna want to vote yes. For those who believe that the site plan should be approved with the three parking spaces as shown, you're gonna want to vote no on this motion, and then make a new motion to approve the site plan as presented, with the only condition being we return home.
Or, or if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass. It doesn't pass. Right. And the only thing, I, that's funny, uh, the, the only thing I, we have to go, or I, I, is, we have this code, right? And the code says we need one spot for 300 square feet. And I know that's not perfect, but it's, the calculation, somebody did somewhere along the line, it said it's probably generally current, right? So, we have 10 more spaces than what is needed for this work, but it's... And I don't know that three extra spaces are gonna make a break in this, this development. So, firstly, I, I would vote yes to your vote. I would vote yes to take them out, I would vote yes if we didn't hit them, because I think the development itself needs to go forward, right? I haven't had four of that, but I don't know that three parking spots is gonna make a break in this entire development, so I would vote, I personally, I would vote yes for the motion without the parking lot, without the parking spots. Would I vote yes for with them? I probably would, because I, that 15 degrees space to me, I, I don't get it, we want more green space, but in this, in the grand scheme of things, I don't think it really matters that much, right? That's not, that's just my...
And I agree, it doesn't matter either way, but we have some way to make some of this green...
If I, if I had to pick one or the other, I'd rather see green space. So...
So do we need to vote on Tessie's motion?
We did, so we, we did, so this is the discussion. We have seconds, this is the discussion, so, 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 call to roll on that.
Ray Pitzel?
Yes.
Tessie Butler? Sarah Ward? Aye. Steve Keen?
Aye.
Mike Wu?
Aye.
Craig Masters?
No.
Nico, two, three?
No.
Okay. It's like me too.
Okay. So, motion passed by two, they're abstaining. Let's get to it.
15 passes.
Okay, so, both passed, you guys had a good discussion. And this doesn't need to be approved by the local board, who review them independently. There is a requirement that there be at least 10 days from the zoning board ruling before the local board can take it off, because anyone can file a challenge, zoning board recommendations, and we will let you know when it is on the agenda, and the local board will do the final approval. Okay. Any other discussions, or any other topics? We had anything else on the agenda today?